Okay, thanks Rob. All right, I'd like to call this meeting of Gray County Council to order. It's June 11th, 2020, and it's just after 9:30 a.m. And again, welcome everyone, everyone from the county council and staff, and those that are following along with us this morning. And again, welcome, and it's a little bit more of a cooler, fresher day, and enjoy the day after our meeting, so very much so. Okay, Madam Clerk, as far as roll call, can you indicate? Do you want to do a roll call, or just you have, or who's here and who isn't?
We have all members of council here, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So we have an agenda in front of everyone today. Is there any declaration of keen interest with members around the virtual screen? All right, if one does arise, you can declare at that time and properly fill the paperwork that you need to do. We have, we have a set of minutes here with regards to council and the committee of the whole dated May 28th, 2020. And I have a mover, which is Counselor Burley and Counselor Robinson. Is there any, any discussion on those minutes?
Mr. Warden?
Okay, I have two people.
Christine.
Okay, Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Counselor Lars, Counselor whoever. I just want to point out on the Committee of the Whole minutes of May 28th, page eight, this is dealing with the broadband motion. The second last paragraph, I'm wondering, it's Associate Minister of Energy and MPP Walker. Mr. Walker is Minister without portfolio, but he is the Associate Minister of Energy. So I, we were tying in that as well as him being the MPP. So if that could just be changed to include both of his titles, I would be appreciative of it.
We will make that change.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Counselor Robinson, and thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, I think I heard Counselor whoever was, wished to make a comment?
Yes, on, on those minutes, the, the two motions, Counselor Robinson's in mind, both three concerned correspondence, and since we're ratifying those motions today, both those pieces of correspondence, it was asked that staff repair those. I'm just wondering if those are ready now.
Okay, just with regards to letters or follow throughs?
Yeah, the letters, yes.
Okay, okay, I'll go back to Madam Clerk or the CAO.
So the letter from, or for the seasonal versus permanent is ready. We've received some comments back from our medical officer of health, Dr. Era, and the broadband resolution has been drafted, and it will be sent out following the adoption of these minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Counselor whoever, is that?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other discussion points from county councillors or staff? All right, seeing none, then that is, anybody opposed to that motion? That is carried. All right, then we have the minutes of the closed meeting of dated May 28th, and I have it moved by Counselor O'Leary and Counselor Hicks. If there is discussion, we will need to go in camera. Any discussion there? Okay, any, anybody opposed to that motion? Hearing none, that is carried, thank you. There is no closed meeting matters. Moving on to reports from the Board of Health Minutes and the Board of Health Special Minutes dated April 24th, 2020. And I have that moved by Counselor Patterson, second by Counselor O'Leary. And Madam Clerk, I know we spoke yesterday, and Dr. Era wasn't going to be in attendance till closer to 10:00, is that correct?
That's correct. He's spoken with Counselor Patterson as the Vice Chair of the Board of Health, and she will take the, these minutes.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Counselor Patterson, do you wish, do you speak to those minutes?
Thank you, Warden McQueen, and good morning, County Council. I have just a very brief update. The Board of Health held a special meeting on April 24th to allow the Board to hold meetings with electronic participation. And that policy to regulate proceedings was reviewed and approved. And then following that, we had our regular meeting, and the Board reviewed correspondence and numerous news releases, as you can see in the minutes, of which the majority are related to COVID-19. And public health modernization is on hold until further notice. And at the time, extra costs due to COVID-19 were estimated at $250,000. And these emergency expenses will be covered by the province if they exceed the health unit's total budget for the year. So that's just a brief report, thank you.
Right, okay, thank you, Counselor Patterson. Is there any questions to Counselor Patterson with regards to those minutes from county councillors? Okay, well, I see none, thank you, Counselor Patterson again. And anybody opposed to those, those minutes? Hearing none, that is carried. All right, moving on then. So we don't have, we have no bylaws for today. Good news and celebrations, and I'm gonna probably, I'm gonna do the same thing that my Deputy Warden did at the last meeting. I'm gonna go around to each municipality, and if you have anything to, to report, and if not, that's fine, and I'll go on to the next municipality. So I'm gonna start off with the municipality of Chatsworth. Scott or Brian?
Thanks, Mr. Warden, Morning County Council. Not a lot to report. Our municipal office, the staff are back in the office. We plan in about two weeks' time doing appointments only for members of the public. So that is our, our strategy going forward. That'll likely continue throughout the, the summer, and hopefully, we're opened up for full business, you know, later in either August or September. We're just deciding on Canada Day events right now. It's tough to, tough to decide whether or not you should be going ahead with events as things in the province seem to change on a regular basis. So I'm interested to hear from other member municipalities what, what they have planned, and whether they've canceled events or not. I think that's it, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much. Does Brian have anything to add? Right, Counselor Gamble? Okay, I hear, I hear none, so I'll move on then to Georgian Bluffs. Mayor Burley or Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'll start off by saying that exciting thing in Georgian Bluff's gonna happen Friday is that Mayor's gonna give his haircut. But it, we, we're starting our process to bring our staff back into our municipal office and start setting it up. We are very excited that our competition for a new CEO is going on very nicely, and it's, it's been a great learning experience for everybody, and it's just a good thing. We're following the directions of the province very closely, and it seems to be working out very good in Georgian Bluff, so we'll move forward, look forward to get back to normal.
So, so Counselor Burley, are you wearing the mask, or the person cutting the hair wearing the mask, or both of you?
Well, they told me, oh, that's a long story. Apparently, I gotta wear a mask, get my haircut, but I don't know how that works.
Well, you'll have a masked look on your hair, maybe, eh? Very good, okay, thank you then, Counselor Burley. Counselor Carlton, do you have anything to add for the news and celebration?
No, I don't at this point, thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. Moving on then to Gray Highlands, Counselor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Before, before I provide our good news, I do have a question for Counselor Burley. If you could provide a brief update on the airport in, in Wharton Capital Airport. We missed that, and it's something I look forward to every two weeks.
You, you made him, you made his day there, Counselor Desai.
Oh, he can thank you later. In terms of, on the COVID front in Gray Highlands, we're currently working on, on policies and how we could bring staff in and how that would work, and what that would play. We're not very far, I don't think, from staff getting into the municipal office at this point. And there hasn't been, there's been some, not really good news, but the fall prepares in Gray Highlands unfortunately have had to be canceled, which means I won't be able to defend my, my second place titles, my reserve champion titles on the, on the cattle show in Markdale and the hog show in Rocklip. And just to provide some positive news from Gray Highlands, we've lost track of how long it's been since we've been the better, better of the two municipalities between Southgate and Gray Highlands, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Desai. And I see there's your picture that shows up on the screen is one of your moments of, of soloing, I presume.
All I will say to that is it was a teddy bear moment.
Okay, all right, then, thank you very much for that, Counselor Desai. And moving on to the town of Hanover, Sue or Zellwenn?
I'll start, thank you, Warden. We're opening slowly, cautiously, we haven't started on our offices yet. Our library is doing the curbside pickup and delivery. People are very excited about that. I don't, I didn't realize how much they missed the library. And the parks and open spaces are opening. I do want to announce that the racetrack is open, but virtually, you can bet online, and you can watch the races online. So that's, that was successful. We had the qualifiers and then the first race last Saturday. Canada Day celebrations will be virtual. We have a scavenger hunt, heritage mystery photos, and you could submit a video of yourself and family singing Oh, Canada. We're decorating houses and businesses, and I did a welcome day, welcome message for Canada Day, and also doing a welcome for the graduates because of, you know, no prom, no walking across the stage, no receiving awards. So, and most of our businesses are open in some format, whether it's restricted or still curbside pickup, but things are starting to open up slowly, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Patterson, and Deputy Warden, and Counselor Hicks, do you have anything you wish to bring forward?
No, not much to add, Mr. Warden, just that in our little household here, we have two graduates, one graduating from grade eight, the other one graduating from high school and off to University of Toronto in September. Proud Papa.
Very good, well, that's, congratulations to you, Deputy Warden, and send our best to your, your graduates from county council. All right, then, moving on then to the municipality of Meford. Mayor Compass or Counselor McKibbeny?
Counselor Compass, you're on mute still, there you go.
There I go, thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Warden. We have, just to answer some questions, our Canada Day celebrations have, will be virtual, if at all. We have canceled the traditional Canada Day festivities. But we are moving ahead with opening businesses in the downtown area. We are looking at, at patios and bump outs from our, our restaurants, so starting up with that. Also, good news that hairdressers are back working again. I think we're all looking forward to that. We have a soft opening of our brand new library coming in October. And of course, we are still doing the curbside pickup of, of books at our library now. And you're quite right, people are really, really enjoying that and happy to have something that they can consider normal. But I wanted to give a shout out to our Golden Town Outreach and our, the, the just amazing generosity of our residents who have contributed to this program three times their normal rate to date on a monthly basis. And so that has helped tremendously. They had also 300 hampers came from the Feed Ontario and the federal government, and they have topped that up with eggs and margarine and milk, also frozen meats, and that has gone out to over 300 individuals. So that's a great program that they are continuing with, and it's just amazing to see the community response. Deputy Mayor last time mentioned Joe Hashet, who is contributing meals to this area, was 564 this week. Just again, a very, very amazing volunteer coordination effort. So shout out to all those who are giving so much of their time and support to help those in need. That's it for me, unless you have something, Shirley?
Thanks very much, Mayor Compass. And I would just quickly add that we have an e-commerce program underway for businesses, which is a shared financial grant between the municipality and the business to set up a site to sell their products online. Our farmer's market is opening tomorrow, which will be an order online and drive-through pickup in our market square this year. We're really looking forward to that. There's a job bank set up on the Chamber of Commerce site to help people find employment who may have, be in need of a, of a new job. And we're also preparing toolkits to deliver to all the businesses, which will have the floor circles on them to tell people where to stand, some sanitizer, and some opening instructions, and, and that sort of thing. So I think that's it for Meford.
Okay, well, thank you from, from Meford. I guess my question to Meford, how is your, your shoreline? I know we had a big storm last night again, and I know that last fall, you had quite a devastating time there.
Yeah, it continues, and certainly, that was the other thing I was just going to mention. We do have a wee beach open in Meford, but basically, all of our beaches are closed because of that damage that has, has been with us for some months now. Memorial Park being run, and David Johnson Park, and Fred Raper Park as well. It's quite amazing to see the devastation.
Well, sorry, hopefully, you're on the mend, Mayor Compass. All right, okay, thank you very much. Moving on now to the city of Own Sound, and Mayor Body, and Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, lots going on. We've got a new city manager, Tim Simmons was acting city manager down in Vaughan. Very, very sharp guy, he's blowing my socks off with a lot of the research before he got here, the connections that he's got. He knew an awful lot about Own Sound before he ever walked through the door, about council, about staff, just, it's amazing the connections that he's got. So we welcome him. COVID, we continue to deal with COVID. The field hospital is still set up in the arena waiting for the next wave, which we still hope doesn't come. But, you know, when you look at all the protests in the states and the big jump in COVID in the last few days, you just worry as we go to phase two that we start to drop our guard and we end up with problems. Staff are coming back. We're not putting on Canada Day, we're looking at other ways to do concerts and, and movies such as drive-ins and those types of things. It is the 100th anniversary of Canada, or sorry, of Own Sound incorporating. So even though the, the city started in 1857, it was 1820 that it incorporated and as a city and left the county. I understand some of you out there are still kind of ticked about the city leaving 100 years ago, and you're holding it against us, but it's okay. Starting after June 1st this year, it's time to let it go, it's 100 years later. So we'll probably shoot off some fireworks where people can congregate safely miles from each other further on in the summer, but not specifically on Canada Day. As most of you know, we have very interesting history here. We're with the George Floyd events the last couple of weeks. Own Sound is the most northerly terminal, terminus of the Underground Railway. We had a very strong black community here over the years that, not saying that they weren't prejudiced against in their day, but they worked very hard, did a lot of the stonemacing, a lot of the big stone churches you see in Own Sound were built by, by the black community. So it's, I think it's 158 years they've been having emancipation breakfast here, so it's pretty important. With COVID, it's pretty hard for the mayor to declare a conflict of interest and then encourage people to go out and march and get together. So I avoided that as best I could. We're encouraging everyone to go to the Black History Carant at Harrison Park, drop to a knee, take a picture, and send it out virtually and spread the word. Yesterday, there was a parade. I've heard that there's 300, I've heard that there's 500 to 1,000. I know there's some councillors that even though they're supporting COVID and distancing, did attend it, and I question the logic, anyway, that's me. So lots going on in Own Sound and in Gray County, so thank you. Over to Brian.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Body and Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, just a couple of things. Tomorrow's a really big day. I have an 8 o'clock a.m. haircut, and at 7 o'clock tomorrow night, I'll, I will be on my favorite patio drinking my favorite beverage. It's a great day for everyone, thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor O'Leary. And I was just gonna say to Mayor Body, let us know, and I can maybe get Penny to do up a certificate, and I'll present it to you along with the city of Own Sound, and we'll put that 100 years behind us.
Well, while we've got you on, why don't you sign up to get that beard shaved off on July 11th with everybody else for COVID, raise some money for the, for the hospital? Just put that in your ear, you've been ducking us, but.
Yeah, well, I.
Come off.
I've had it, I've had, I've had facial hairs since I've been 17. Nobody would recognize me if I shave it off. Maybe that's a good thing, we'll talk further, we'll talk further. Okay, thank you, Own Sound, and now we'll move on to the township of Southgate. Mayor Woodbury and Counselor Millen?
Yeah, we're pretty much similar to everyone else with getting the plans together for staff going back into the office. We're taking a very slow, cautious approach to it. And we've had a lot of the office refitted with, with plexiglass between different workstations and at the front, and going through the same thing as everybody else is with, with all of that. We've had some businesses start opening again. What's really great is the, the different service clubs are interested in getting, getting things going however they can. And so, yeah, besides the, you know, beautiful summer weather that Gray Highlands wished they had, we, we're, we're doing great. And Cash, it's one of the nice things about how the order goes in the table is we get to talk later.
Temperature was 39 degrees.
Okay.
Well, time to turn, time to. Felt like 39 degrees yesterday. I don't know how much more summer you guys.
Somebody mute that guy, will ya?
Yeah, it's okay, you can turn the heat off in the house now, Cash. Brian, do you have anything to add?
Just two things, if I might, Mr. Warden. In regards to COVID-19, to our south, Wellington, Guelph, Dufferin Board of Health has mandated that face masks be worn by all employees in businesses that are dealing with the public, and all public must wear them when they go into places of business. I worry, as Mr., as Mr. Body does, that we're gonna let our guard down and, and we're getting it into a mess. I hope that doesn't happen, but I, I would not be surprised. The other point I might make is that the weather has been really good for the, the farmers in Southgate, and indeed, all of Gray County, and the crops are looking great. They're probably still picking stones in Gray Highlands, but that's okay. They stumble around stones all year round, so they're well used to that. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, and Counselor Millen, the picking of the stones will never stop because they just keep growing in Gray County is, is in Gray Highlands, and for sure. But it was nice to see that rain last night. I don't know if you call that a million dollar rain, but it was sure well, well needed. And thanks, Mayor Woodbury. Okay, Blue Mountains, Tom the Mountain?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. The, we're, we're progressing very well here. The Rotary had its Hope in the Valley Stay-at-Home Gala on Saturday, featuring a lot of local entertainers and interviews, and it was a big Zoom event. Raised 36, over $36,000 for Rotary, and so that was a great success. As far as openings, our farmer's market is open for drive-by pickup only, so that's in front of the town hall on Sunday, so people can order online and, and pick it up on Sundays. We still have a Black Lives Matter demonstration on Saturday. The organizers approached the town in the OPP, and it was a very peaceful, well socially-distanced event with people standing along the highway socially-distanced, holding their signs. There's about 200 people up, and I want to express my appreciation to the organizers and the OPP for coordinating the event and having such a successful event. With the re, stage two reopening, we're pretty much prepared for that. The village will be reopening as well as the downtown. In the downtown core, next week, we're gonna close off the parking spots to make more room for social distancing. And the, all of the businesses have cooperated, and there are opening protocols concerning PPE, the number of people in a business, etc. So I think we're well-prepared for that. And with that, you know, we will get visitors, and I am concerned, but certainly with the protocols we have in place, I think we'll be able to, to manage and keep people socially distanced. We've also put up signage around the town, so people are reminded that they still need to be careful.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor Whoever, and Counselor Potter, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple of things, our library has started curbside service as well, as I know some of the others in Gray Bruce have, so that's great. Our library is very well-used, it has one of the biggest number of cardholders in Ontario, although we're not the biggest town in Ontario by any means. We also had the storm last night, as many of you did. We, our CAO was right on top of it, sending out texts and messages through the evening to let us know what was going on. We seem to have had a few trees down, but no damage to the infrastructure, so that's a good thing. The mayor could tell us whether or not there was any shoreline damage on his way. And we've mentioned getting to know more about Black History in Gray Bruce and the Sheffield Black History Museum in Parksport is a good place to learn more about that. They aren't open just yet, they will be open later this summer. So if you get a chance, this would be a good summer for us all to spend more time visiting some of the places in Gray Bruce and getting to know our own county. So that would be a good place to stop and, and have a look around. And I think that's all, I, I do want to mention the, the event on, the Rotary event on Saturday evening. The mayor didn't say it, but he did a pretty good job in his interview on that and got out a lot of information to the public about how we're dealing with, with COVID-19 and, and as we begin the, we hope, the recovery and reopening phase, although we know that there will probably be a, a second wave, especially as people move out of the city and look for some fresh air in, in Gray Bruce.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Potter. And moving on to not the last, or the last but not the least, and the most, probably in, in Mayor Robinson's eyes, the most important, Counselor Robinson.
It's all about Gray County for certain, Warden. Well, good morning, everyone. I wanted to mention that the Trek for Tourette's, West Gray Aitken, held a very successful virtual, untraditional trek, which raised a little over $9,000 for research and education. In terms of an update, a quick update regarding COVID, of our, our West Gray committees are starting to ramp up, starting with our West Gray Economic Development Committee. There needs to be some finishing touches put on the Community Improvement Plan, and then having that out to our business community. Our Accessibility Committee will be starting up again, as well as our Traffic Working Group. I would like to remind everyone, and I would hope that when you do need to go out to shop, that you shop local and shop Gray County, practicing all the COVID protocols. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Robinson, and Counselor Hutchison, do you have anything to add?
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Warden.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Warden. One of the things I was gonna mention was the success of the Trek for Tourette's virtual, so it was two years in a row, the last two, they were number one in Canada, which is quite an accomplishment, so I'm not sure where they ended up this year, but I'm sure that they'll probably be in, in, if not the top couple, but that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you, Counselor Hutchison, and thanks, everyone, for that good news and celebration.
Mr. Warden?
Yes?
I think Savannah Myers would like to speak to a great initiative that Gray County has just launched.
Okay, fantastic. Savannah?
Thank you very much. Just wanted to take a, a quick moment to let you know about a program that over the last three weeks, staff have been able to put together. We were approached by a teacher who was also the mom of a grade-eight graduation and said, you know, we'd really like to be able to do a, a big celebration virtually for our graduates. So that came to Brent Fisher and I from On Sound, and we brought it forward to the working group. Three weeks later, we have a two-county program that will cover all of our municipalities. Bruce County's on board as well. Both museums in Gray and Bruce are on board to collect this. Oh, perfect, that's, that's it right there. And it's called Gray Bruce Grad Celebration for 2020, so we can recognize all of our graduates from kindergarten right up through university and college to really make a point that they are very valued, very important, and this was a big deal, that we can celebrate them as a full Gray and Bruce region. So both museums will be collecting stories so that this can become part of our collections, and we, when we are back up and running at Gray Roots, that we'll be able to do an actual physical exhibit that does collect what this looks like, and it will become something that we can do year over year as part of our retention efforts to help remember our youth. So we do have a, a webpage up on Gray. Bruce has one as well, and it includes downloadable posters and window stickers and Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, you name it. All of it is there on one resource page, so we'll make sure that we share that page with you following council today. And I really do want to say thank you so much to our communications team, because they were just phenomenal. We brought them an idea, they ran with it, and here we are with a full, a two-county celebration of our graduates, so we wanted to make sure that you were aware, and it's gonna be really good news. We'll try and share on the 25th, when we meet again in council, some of the highlights from the day, because it will have happened just before.
Okay, well, thanks, Savannah, and that's great news, and yes, just because it's COVID-19, it's still very important to recognize all those graduates for this year.
Mr. Warden, Counselor, Counselor Desai has a question for Savannah.
Sure, go ahead, Counselor Desai.
Mr. Warden, thank you, Madam Kirk. My question for Savannah is, is this going to be sort of a Zoom event where everyone gets, or gets to experience the graduation ceremony? Or are there any details on that front, or is it just a concept so far?
Savannah?
On Wednesday, June 24th at 7:00 PM, we're asking all residents, all graduates, to have a collective kind of at-home graduation celebration. We're reaching out to all of our municipal fire and churches to ring bells and sound the alarm so that it, it really is a loud community celebration. So we're asking everyone to go to their porches and cheer on, and then we're gonna do everything we can to collect. We have a hashtag so that we can collect all of that information, and we do have an actual collection. And I know that Rob, he's also got more to share, because he's been very involved in this, so I'm just gonna pass it over to him to, to finish that off for you, Akash.
Okay, thanks, Savannah. Rob?
Thanks, Savannah. We, we won't be doing an online Zoom streaming thing on that evening. It's more going to be the hashtags and collecting those stories and sharing them around as it's happening. A lot of schools are, are still doing their own celebrations that I think are going to involve those sort of Facebook Live Zoom meeting things. We're letting them do that. This is just going to be the broader celebration.
Okay, and just, thank you very much for that, Rob, and just, Counselor Desai, when you were speaking, you must be on your phone, maybe, because you seem to be a little quiet, so just make sure you do speak up. And just like on the 7, or just like on the 24th, the 7:00 AM, you're gonna speak really loud, so.
Mr. Warden, I have Counselor Soever.
Counselor Soever. Counselor Soever.
Counselor Soever, you're still muted.
There we go. It showed me. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, I was gonna say the same thing, Mr. Warden. I was having trouble hearing Counselor Desai. I never thought I'd complain about the bottom of him speaking, but, you know, I, I do hope he can speak up.
Don't complain, don't complain.
Okay, I think that's, everybody's in a good, good spirit today, and, and is there anything else that we missed for good news and celebrations? Okay, well, I'm glad everybody had a chance to speak up, and that's fantastic, and certainly we have a meeting next, second meeting in June, so we'll go the, have a little bit more information probably what people are doing for July 1st as far as virtual or whatever, so. Okay, so I hear none, so we, I have a mover, I have Counselor Burley and, and Counselor Mackie that are, are moving and seconding the adjournment of our council meeting. Is there any opposed to that? If not, that is carried. All right, so just take a second here.